Uh, Susie Roll call for the council meeting, please.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzio.
Yes.
Councilmember Janicich.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes. Motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight.
I'll make that motion.
I'll come on.
Discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzio.
Yes.
Councilmember Janicich.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes. Uh, citizen comment for items not on the agenda. Public comment is closed. Full business. Number A, Fairgrounds Study.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, back in 2019, uh, we started the process of looking at what the future of the fairgrounds would be once County Youth Fair left the site. Um, we did that study in the summer, or finished that study in the summer of 2019. Um, at the time, um, we didn't really have a clear indication when the fair was going to leave, so we didn't really wanna press the issue and also with, at the time, the income tax proposal, just didn't think this was a good i- good time with all of those conditions to be, um, to discuss it. So, um, I've asked, since we now kinda have a little bit more clarity, we believe, we have our agreement with the fair that is expired yet a point three. We anticipate possibly this summer will be the last summer, um, for the fair. Um, starting to think about, well, what we really need to, we really need to start thinking about what we would like to see for Rec Park. And so I thought it was a good time to dust off the plan that we had, that we, that we engaged the community on and, um, just kinda dust it off, look at it. Um, I think we probably would wanna refer it to the park board when it's done, um, as they're doing their park, as they're doing their park master planning. Um, but I'm gonna turn this over to Andy and Michaela.
Thanks, Mike. Um, so, uh, more fun topic this time.
(laughing).
Uh, so Malia Rechtstrau is with me. She is in landscape and urban designer with Williams &amp; Works. Um, so as Mike said, this was a plan that we started, I think, in twenty, early 2019. Took about six months, I believe. Um, had some cool engagement. Uh, the community helped us out and, you know, handed out some surveys and some, some things to sketch on at the expo. Uh, we had an event in this room, actually, where we had people come in with like scale game pieces and things like that. So, the result of all this is this, uh, report and plan, which, um, Malia's going to walk through now. Um, and, yeah, let's kinda talk about, um, you know, so I guess our, our goal for you is to, you know, digest it, ask questions, comments, et cetera. Um, there's some things that we'll have to do before you, you know, give any kind of final approval to it, so it's a kind of preliminary review of it. So, uh, with that, Malia, to you.
Hi, Council. Thank you for having us tonight. Um, excited to talk about this. Like Mike mentioned, it's been a few years since we've really had the chance to dive back into this project. So, um, I'm gonna quick walk you through the document, uh, just to talk about the process that was done and go through some of the, um, the end results, uh, that were included in this report. So, um, you know, we did some, uh, some site research, talking a little bit about the history. Obviously, you know, the fairgrounds has a rich history, uh, you know, going back to 1935. Um, and with the fairgrounds being there for so long, um, all of this, uh, information, including, you know, some of the constraints with, um, you know, the flood hazards that are on the site that many of you are aware of, uh, were presented to the public when we did our engagement to help frame conversations. That's connected? That's okay. Um, there we go. Um, so, our public engagement process, uh, you know, actually began with the steering committee, so I recognize some of you from that committee, so thank you for, uh, you know, joining that process. Um, where we talked about, you know, well, what's appropriate for the park and how do we wanna engage the community on talking about what can happen here in the future? So, one of the first steps was, uh, creating these blank slate maps that were distributed during the expo. Um, people were able to draw their own ideas and send them back to us via, um, snail mail, so that was kinda fun. Uh, we got lots of different ideas, um, a lot more, um, I would say broad ideas for this practice than we did our, uh, engagement here in this room. So, you know, you can see some of these have gardens and camping spaces. Uh, you know, one of them has a bumper cars and, uh, that fair field, which, you know, is always fun. You gotta dream big, so.
Over the road. Left turn lane will have all the bumper cars.
So then we, um, you know, promoted this public open house during the expo and through other events, um, where we had scale game pieces, uh, with predefined pieces that the steering committee came up with. Um, allowed people to be able to, uh, proportionately see how different activities would fit on the map, which was really helpful. When they were done with their designs, usually working as a group, we'd take a picture of their design and then, you know, start to assess, uh, some of the common themes that we saw through this process. There was also a short survey that we included during the design day. So, um, you know, a lot of survey participants, uh, you know, almost everyone was from Lowell area, which is great. We like to have people who, you know, who live here talk about their actual, um, improvements to their community. Um, a lot of the participants, uh, really focused on some of these passive recreation elements for reasons that they would want to visit parks. So, things like kayaking, picnicking, uh, the festivals and events that they're used to seeing at the park were certainly popular. Um, spending time with families. So, some of those, uh, family-friendly kinda casual activities were things that we started to look at for this process. So, the design around Park G is an example of one of the, the plans that people, uh, created with their groups. We have sticky notes where people could, um, you know, write in some other activities that maybe weren't represented as game pieces and starting to represent the, uh, connection to the Lowell area, area trailway, which was an important, um, theme for, um, some of our engagement. So, we had a lot of different amenities here. Um, looking over here, playgrounds, picnic areas, uh, you know, fishing, um, you know, again, these types of passive recreation were really popular. It's helpful for us since there is a lot of what we would consider active and sports recreation on the site today, um, with baseball, you know, football fields. So, um, kind of assessing, uh, how those were important to people, how they might be being used and how people can see the site potentially changing, uh, keeping those things in mind, um, you know, led us to the design that we have, um, in some of the following pages. So, these were, again, some of the top amenities, playgrounds, picnics. Uh, you know, the idea of a open air market or flexible space, something that could be inundated with water, um, kayak launches, splash pad. So, for the preliminary designs, um, we created a couple of different concepts that we vetted with the steering committee. I won't go into great detail on these, but, um, one of them was focused more on those passive elements, um, while another one, uh, you know, focused on the campground, which was a big topic of conversation during this process. Um, so the steering committee, uh, when they met together, uh, provided some direction, uh, um, kind of best elements of both of these designs that could be translated into a final design. So, we also looked at the way that these preliminary designs worked because obviously there's some interesting circulation patterns that exist today, especially with access to, um, you know, king mill and dirt harvesties and stacking, uh, distances for truckloads. So, that led us to exploring a final concept plan. Uh, we rotated here where north is to your left. Um, that includes kind of this grand entrance from coming off of Hudson. It includes some open air market spaces, um, play spaces, splash pads. Um, and then, once you get into the heart of the site, really a lot of reforestation. People wanted to have more of that, um, outdoor field in this location. Um, we have a couple of fields to, uh, what would be the, um, the east that, uh, could be used for multi-use. The idea of not necessarily locking one sport down, I think was, uh, a nice way to, uh, be able to still use the site for some of these sports recreation while also still, again, keeping that passive feel. Uh, this leads to what we had originally conceptualized as a forest overlook, um, ridge connecting to, uh, what would be the Lowell area trailway. One thing I do want to note is, uh, as some of these designs have moved forward, um, there is no longer the option to, uh, connect to the trail across the Flat River. We're gonna have to actually go across the Grand River, so that's a pretty big impact on what this design was originally laid out as. So, you know, as we move forward, we want to address that. Um, to the north, we have some camping areas, so both, uh, you know, rustic tent camping, a few RV spaces and, um, a small amount of cabins where, uh, ideas to, again, tuck them to the north, kinda keep the park and, uh, campground area a little more separated. Um, quite a few of the barns were recommended to come out, uh, as some of their conditions are questionable, um, and again, some of the flooding issues in the past degraded them. Uh, so, um, the King and the Foreman buildings are shown to be, uh, included on this plan, um, as their historic structures are in relatively good condition. On the southern site, or the southern portion of the site, we're really looking again at more of those passive elements, um, especially because, as many of you know, um, the, that portion of the site is in the floodway and, um, it is inundated with water for, you know, a fair amount of the year. So, we're looking at things like, um, low-impact passive play, so things like bocce ball, picnicking, um, enhancements to boat launch, um, kayak launches and fishing docks. So, just something to connect people with the water, but at the same token, you know, something that can withstand some of that flooding that occurs annually. So, here we have some images that we go through, but, um, they essentially just illustrate what we talked about on the plan. So, again, some of these, um, camping picnic spaces, this kind of grand bridge we imagined going across the Flat River, um, you know, pieces that could emulate what you already have with the River Walk, so some of those boardwalk elements and, um...
And kayak launches.
And here talking about some of those, uh, ways that we can handle water a little differently with open air structures and, um, and with, uh, you know, large green spaces, forced on water retention. So, that's pretty much what we have. I will jump back to the layout so we can talk through some of these things. Like I mentioned, um, you know, it's been a couple of years, so there have been, uh, pieces of this that have been tried to move forward, but, um, have essentially pivoted to other more realistic, uh, options as, again, like we mentioned, we can't cross the Flat River anymore, so we'll have to look at different trail options and things like that. So, with that, um, Andy, did you have any comments you wanted to add to this?
No. Uh, like I said, I think the, you know, purpose of this is just to introduce you to the plan. Um, you know, if you have questions, comments, feedback for us, it's helpful, of course. Um, as Malia mentioned, we have some adjustments to make, primarily with respect to the trail. And then, you know, we'll take direction from staff as far as we need to get this front of the park's board, planning permission, whatever, we'll kinda, you know, wrap it through the, the typical, or, you know, whatever desired process is necessary, and you'll get a more polished, complete, uh, plan back.
I know you guys are in the early stages, but, but, once this gets kicked off and the funding is available, is this a five-year project, a ten-year project? What do you think it will all take to really get this park where it needs to be based on this versus phases?
My opinion is twenty to thirty years.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like we're a long-term build-out. I mean, there's a lot of stuff.
Yeah. I think you could, you know, I think you could start, the fact of the matter is, is that this is gonna be, you have a number of challenges. One, it's in a flood plain. It floods. Um, that's your, that's your biggest issue. Um, and try, you know, and I don't know how the G and R, you know, you're gonna have to go through the NR test run grants for this, for this, for this project. For the city to fund this on their own, it's not gonna happen. Uh, it's gonna, you know, we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to, you know, plan this over time. But that being said, there, you know, there, I think there's things in the short term you could start, like, for example, I think, I know Cliff's envisioned, he's always envisioned, the campground. Um, the campground is something that, you know, no granite issue, you know, don't wanna be putting electric in areas of the floodplain and, and stalls on the floodplain, but, um, you know, you could start there and then build off from there.
Technically, Mike, we do have electric in the floodplain.
Well, that's right, we do, don't we?
Yes, and I questioned the, like, our group and they said, hey, it's safe sitting there, just don't play with it.
Can't bring your money to all your...
The reason I brought this up is 'cause I, I didn't want people to think here tonight that this is a two, five-year project and funding available, that, oh, yeah, we, we got this, you know, how communities could be and next thing you know, it's, it's...
Where the chart.
Exactly, so.
And I know, like, the campground, but there are entities out there that will come in and develop it and...
Certain areas, if you give a flash...
The amenities, though, right? You can't just put in a campground. You have to, I mean, if you...
Well, we already have, we already have bathrooms there. We have showers there.
Yeah, number two.
And one little piece that was bugging me is, you know, how, how do we put in a campground? Do we have somebody, have the staff at da-da-da? And I heard from two or three people that said, hey, 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 you can start out. A lot of campgrounds up north are on the under system. You go up there and you're gonna camp and you put your ten bucks in the machine and you get your permit. And so, to me, that was really, it made me really happy because we don't have to come up with some big capital outlay for an employee to sit over there, even though Dan was willing to work for free.
I put my trailer up today.
The thing is, if you're thinking about camping, are you gonna have sewer water hookup also provide those to the higher-end campers that come in? And that, that is a cost. No, we're not too far from the wastewater treatment plan, but again, you still need to pump that and get that up there somewhere.
You mean the wastewater slot?
We've all been to camping areas where we don't pay at those.
Right, and you can make sure we have a dumping station.
But we do have a dumping station, if you, I believe someone from...
Ryan, you said we never ask you any questions. Here we go.
There you go.
Am I wrong? There isn't, there's a dumping station.
There's a dumping station up at the wastewater plant.
Down?
Yeah.
And couldn't one be put down where the old...
The old drainless station used to have...
Yeah.
...access there. Ideally, that would disappear some days.
But it could be used as a, which is a real close proximity.
One thing the city could explore, too, is something with the land lease where you provide development rights and you have someone else manage the property for you. Just going up there, I know that there's...
Yeah, the city of Hart got that.
Well, there are interested parties in this community that have always approached me, already approached me, sorry about a land lease type of campground.
The other fun thing in my mind about the passage of time is, as we just heard at our last meeting from Dave Austin, the, the trails are gonna be completed and it's gonna take a couple of years, but when those are completed, this thing would be like the centerpiece for, even if you weren't camping, if you were, it's someplace to stop. It's a, it's a place, especially if we get some of the little outdoor market things going, whatever.
That's why I like that twenty-two, 'cause it looks like a roundabout. But it's designed to bring...
I have prepared a resolution demanding a roundabout or two in the park. I have the full support of council.
I wouldn't say full.
(laughing).
Well, and one nice thing, too, when we talk about phasing first things to happen, like you just mentioned, um, you have funding to finish the rest of the Lowell area trailway connection. So, um, that's certainly something that could happen, you know, very soon when you're thinking about implementation of this plan.
And the, you know, the vision was to have a, a bridge over there and obviously putting a pedestrian bridge is probably one of the most, if not the most expensive thing on the map, and that's gonna be solved by the Lara Trails.
Yeah.
It's not going that direction, but it's still a pedestrian bridge that will allow somebody to hop on their bicycle or just go for a walk.
And it has so many appealing amenities that if you have to change or remove one or two, it's got a real, I have a variable camp Dearborn vibe to me. It's a east side campground, campground right in the middle and then amenities all around. And people, I mean, they're driving two and a half, three hours to get there for a weekend.
I do like that bridge going over to the highway. I mean, if you go back in our history, we had an island and they held festivals and carnivals and all kinds of fun things. And then the railroad came through and let's trust the land and we now can't touch it. But we can use that island, if nothing else, for dry camp, or, you know, tent camping or picnics or...
Remember the city owns the property to the upper part of that river, don't it?
Just the, just the only. Yeah, we own the island.
We own the property to there. What he said, too, that's, uh...
Moose property. Yeah. So, it's, I like that layout.
I do, too.
Don't know how we're gonna pay for it, but I like that layout.
Yeah, these are twenty, thirty, and forty-year plans. I mean, but it's not gonna happen tomorrow. And, but, you know, we might wanna, obviously, probably wanna tighten this up a little bit, like maybe at a later point, look at this again, and then at some point, probably direct this to the park board to maybe put a short-term implementation direction and then a longer-term plan.
Uh, I think we also need to keep in mind what's popular. They may not be popular in twenty years only to build it. There's gonna be new activities and new centers and this is...
True, but I do feel like the love of outdoors never really goes away from generation to generation. It's always there.
Well, Jerry is a perfect example. He planned that whole park out and then pickleball became a thing in the middle of his planning, so he threw it in there and now it's all practice.
Yeah.
So...
The other thing I'll mention is that, you know, the, the park's board is going through the five-year Parks and Recreation Master Planning process right now, so some of what they can do can tie into this sort of prioritizing how this gets phased in over time. And so, that's a five-year plan, but certainly they could talk about longer-term goals and kind of how they want to, you know, work through...
Well, yeah, it's good to bring it back now, 'cause we still have a year and a half worth of fairs before we can do anything. Now, we gotta phase some of the barns that are left and what need to be...
Yeah, there's a lot of things that have to be done.
And what's gonna happen with Foreman and King Buildings in the meantime.
Right.
But I think it's a super cool design.
And I know I've talked to Mark Anderson, you know, he would like to partner with the city and the township to partner. There's some fundraising efforts, more great Grand Rapids area, regional, where we might be able to take advantage of some resources there for this.
And it's gotta be fluid, because Jerry and I have been working on a splash pad through the city property adjacent to the township part. So, and when you put, remember, twenties or whatever, you know what I mean?
Right.
It's all fluid.
Right.
But I think it's a very cool design. And I'm glad we're talking about it and definitely put that to the side.
Yep.
All right, any other questions for Williams &amp; Works? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Can I have a public comment real quick on that?
Sure.
Uh, I'm Tyler Kent, uh, San Jose State Drive, Oklahoma, Michigan. The, uh, one thing I did wanna comment on, I think this is great. Uh, I'm a planner by trade myself, so what I'd like to think about is this is twenty, thirty years out in the future, but we wanna think what our community's gonna look like twenty, thirty years out in the future. We're all gonna continue to grow. We're the next place to be, after all. Um, so as our population grows, we're gonna have more vehicles on Hudson Street. And what I don't wanna do is preclude any type of left turn lane signal or anything on Hudson coming into town. Um, I noticed couples that had just had like a basketball court really close to the right of that road. And I get it's a design, it's not anything specific, but I'd really like to make sure we preserve some real estate in case things gotta get harder to come there or grow.
Oh, I would assume we'd de-sell lanes and all kinds of fun things and that's gonna require...
Well, I have that road, so you're lucky there.
Thank you.
You could.
All right, anything else for the fairgrounds? Number two, King Memorial Pool.
Good evening. I'm John Sterling and, uh, I'm from a group that's called a Community Center and Pool. And it's kind of, and I brought some, um, members of our committee along with me, and there's, uh, three other people here. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to, uh, give you a little history of what we've been doing behind the scenes. So, we're kinda coming out of the closet and trying to tell you what we've been up to. Um, we have an active group of about twelve members, and we've had more than that, they kinda come and go, but we've got a strong group of eight members. And, uh, we've been meeting for two and a half years. And, uh, we meet in numerous places, but right now we're meeting down at, uh, King Millings, uh, building. Uh, we meet twice a week, or twice a month, sorry. Um, Wednesday's each week, you know, we're not quite that active. Just hold on there, bitch. Uh, what we've done is we've have taken the whole community thing and we're a spin-off group from the, uh, Impact Church. And we have nothing to do with them other than we decided we wanna do something for the community and kids in general. The, yeah, we've kinda grown from that and we were researching and trying to come up with something that would benefit the community, so we're talking a community center and an indoor pool. So, back to kinda what you're talking here with the fairgrounds, uh, we're gonna get around to that. But, uh, what we've done is we raised, uh, ten thousand dollars of local money and we did a need study and we've done a feasibility study through Williams &amp; Works. And from the, uh, study, our number one item is a pool. Seventy percent of the people may have the first choice. They want a pool in this committee, or this community, sorry. Uh, we've talked with the YMCA and got their blessings. We've talked with the old school and got their blessings, but, uh, we have an issue of timing. The school's just gone through a village, uh, uh, issue and, you know, they're five to ten years out before they can do anything. The, uh, Impact Church was purchased by the YMCA, so they're concentrating over there with their program. So, they're busy doing their thing, school's busy doing their thing, and we wanna get busy doing our thing. So, we switched gears and we really changed our topic to the King Memorial Pool. We, this town has had a pool. Had a pool for their, uh, that's been used for thirty-one years. It's been empty for thirty-one years. So, we did our research and we've gone back and says, why was this pool shut down in this community? And if you go back to the ledger, the low ledger, and I was back and mm, you gotta turn the page, John. There you go. Um, I gotta find the year. Lost my spot here. Um, well, nineteen, nineteen eighty-nine. It actually closed in nineteen ninety-two, so it's been vacant since then. So, the question that, you know, that's brought up is why was the pool shut down? And there's basically a couple of reasons. Number one, the, uh, decking, the padding around the pool has minor cracks. The pool itself needed to be drained, uh, plaster touched up, cleaned up, repainted. But the big issue is the piping underneath the grounds is metal pipe and that's rusting. It would cost, at that time, between fifty and sixty thousand dollars to do. There was no money for that. Uh, so what the city did was they filled it in. So, to compensate for that, they, uh, built Pebble Beach as a swimming place. But that's not the same thing as a pool. I mean, the pool, if you ask people in this town that have been here for years, their kids have been there, you know, it's been a mark here and low. So, we're concentrating our efforts on redoing King Pool. And, uh, what we, what we, you know, um, we've looked at the building. The building is, you know, quite, uh, quite solid. It's a block building. It was built by local people in the community. The Lions Club, it's a group that really headed it up, and Merchants. And, uh, they've taken the locker rooms out of there, 'cause the football teams used to be there and use the football field, high school kids. So, they've taken the locker rooms out and converted that to a, a community space. They put a kitchen in the building, which has been maintained. The restrooms are still there, but as far as the locker rooms, no. So, the building itself is in pretty good shape, but the pool is not. So, what we're doing is we're looking to move forward. So, we scouted things out and come up with these ideas. And a requirement, which would be our next step, is to do some soil borings. To see is the soil at the pool down at King Memorial, is it underground water, you know, what is the status before we can move ahead. So, um, we've contacted a contracting company. It's called, um, SME, Soil Materials Evaluation, uh, underground rapids. And to do the borings, that would tell us if the ground is satisfied to proceed with this project, would cost about four thousand dollars. So, what I'm proposing to the council is I'd like you to think about a couple of things. Number one, um, well, no, oops, skip to that. Um, you know, money is always an issue, and this four thousand dollars I just mentioned. Um, there is some money out there. I heard you make comments on, you know, twenty-five years, we're gonna need money to pay for this. But we understand as a group that we're gonna have to come up with some kind of... a group that we're gonna have to come up with some kind of plan to make this thing viable or actually work out. Mr. Wingard, Babe Wingard, Sam Wingard, I met him, oh gee, it was a long time ago, when I first came to Lowell back in 72. He hired me to do some painting work for him. Well, we made conversation and he has donated $320,000 to the building of a swimming pool. That is on the books that the Lowell School, the Lowell School is actually in charge of. There is the Inglehart money from Mr. Inglehart, which is in the Grand Rapids Foundation. And Mr. Inglehart bequested to the city, or, yeah, to the city, that they have a building of a pool that he would help maintain it. You know, we gotta build a pool and get it going. But there was supposed to be $100,000 per year for 30 years. And that was also funded in the Lowell ledger. So there's some sources out there. We've got some money. Yes, there is. I can document that. I can prove it to you. We've got that, you know, documentation. So the stuff that I've presented here so far, we've been able to prove. So what I'm asking of the, of the council is to consider, you know, can you help us with $4,000 so we can do these borings and then come back to you and say, you know, you wanna play ball with us or not? That's kinda the bottom line of this, this whole thing. So we're kinda taking that little dream that you just saw up there on the screen, but they didn't talk about the pool area, you know, they were just talking about the football field and some of the other properties. So that being said, that's into my presentation.
Mr. Anthony, questions? John, I've asked you these questions. I've asked them. I'm gonna ask them again, hoping you can, if you had any idea. My biggest concern, obviously, is sustainability. And my biggest concern is that I just have to, I just have to be the Debbie Downer, in my mind, this'll fail and the city will be left holding back. Cause that's how I have to operate and do my job. And I'm not saying you will, but that's just how I have to, I have to, what I, what I approach this, is how I have to look at it. And my first question would be, is, this would be a, probably a nonprofit organization running this in conjunction with the entire community. What communities our size in the state have done that and have been successful?
Okay. We haven't gone that far. We just wanna know, is the property, what am I gonna say? I think we were Perp Tech, Perk Tech, cause I understand that from building thing. We wanna know is the ground solid enough? If it's not, then we're wasting our time. So, you know, as far as your question, we totally understand that, but we haven't crossed that bridge yet.
Just, just to clarify, we're talking about a pool that's open 365 days a year, heated indoor...
I did not say that, but that could happen.
Well, that's what I, what, what kind of pool are you, it's my understanding, the pool that used to be there was open when it was hot and...
Three months out of the year, four months out of the year, whatever.
Right.
No, we've discussed those things. I mean, you know, enclosing, putting a roof on it, sides on it, doors that open, you know, so we've done the things that you were doing when that stuff was on the screen, you know, I wanna go camping here, I wanna do this, I wanna do that. You know, we've discussed all those things, but we don't even, you know, that's way down the road.
Well, how would the schools, the reason I'm asking this is eight, nine years ago, I was part of a group, Mr. Wa, the Waite Foundation was gonna donate some land. They had people from the Y, from the schools, other community people. We all got together a few times at the chamber kicking this around. And in order, you know, if the school's in it, they wanna be able to have their swim team there. They're not, they don't want it to be when school isn't in session. And so are you thinking initially of just having an outdoor pool to start with or...
Well, we're, yeah. But what you're discussing, there's been six groups before us that have tried to do a community.
They're playing lots of pool?
And it's been townships and, you know, people want it. And we're trying to take what's there. Money is always an issue. Can we do a phase one and get something going? You know, say you gotta put $500,000 into it, and you've got yourself a pool that might last 10 or 15 years. Then you can do the whole big deal if you want, but, you know, we gotta get the bubble rolling here somehow.
Well, how much does it cost to build a non-enclosed, large enough for a community pool?
It can go that far.
Oh.
We didn't know if we can put it on the ground yet.
Right.
You know, man can throw some numbers out, and if you want $500,000, I'll throw a number like that out.
Okay.
But I have nothing to support that.
And then the other questions I have are liability. Who's gonna be liable if something, you know, cause this is now on city property. How's the city, how's that gonna be addressed? And then also, my biggest concern is if it's, if it doesn't make it. Now, if, let's say we do build an expansion to the facility, we, we gotta light it, we gotta heat it. How is the city gonna be made whole so they're not left holding the back? I mean, I think those things, I, I mean, I, I, we need those, I mean, I think before we can move forward, we need those questions answered.
Also, it's the most litigious society in the history. So insurance and liability, there's gonna be a nightmare. And then if it doesn't work, then they walk away because they're nonprofit, then what do we have to do? We have to drain it, or we have to maintain the new addition, or we have to fill it in, the building?
I, I look at it this way, you know, we're just a small portion of the area population. And who's gonna use that? So do we look at Lowell Township and for Genesha Township to help support that? And it's really a community pool of the surrounding 25, 30,000 people that live in our area versus just the four or five thousand people in Lowell. I, I think that's a huge thing to look at.
Well, it is. You know, that's what the six groups before us, we're doing, you know, we're, we're trying to back up and do it small time and to answer, it's okay to do it there. You know, we're trying to do it small time, which means, to answer your question, if somebody from Elkhorn wants to come and swim, you gotta pay.
Well, the city of Wyoming did that with the Jackson Park pools. They had an indoor and outdoor pool.
If you were a resident.
Yeah, if you were a resident, it was 50 cents or whatever. And if you were a non-resident, it was a dollar. And it ended up having to be subsidized so much by the actual Wyoming School District that they closed off. And that's a lot bigger community than, you're talking Wyoming, Grand Rapids, Grandville, Genesha, and that's a lot bigger community than Lowell and the townships. I just worry about it being viable.
Well, I think we got information tonight. Not that we can choose right tonight, but...
And my, my point is, I'm not asking for an answer. I'm just introducing, you know, I'm trying to tell you what we've done so far. And we're kind of at a stalemate. So our options for, for my side is, we can go raise $4,000, have the fees of the borings done, and come back to you and say, this is what we got. Does that satisfy anything?
That's absolutely fine, yeah. I, I like it going step by step without a huge commitment that nobody can get.
Well, there's, there's so many unknowns right now throughout there. I mean, we need to work on this more. I totally understand that. But, you know, we're not gonna, you know, spend a lot of time on something that's not even gonna come close to happening. And, you know, we've got some money possibilities out there. I mean, that Wingard money is $320,000 would go a long ways. But, you know, that's for the building of it. So we need to get, number one, you know, maybe I'll ask this question. Would you be in favor of us investigating and could we possibly get your support to do something down there? I mean, right now it's just been, you know, I've talked to a few of you, and we've gone down there and looked. So if you wanted to say I'm trespassing, maybe I was trespassing.
Are you asking for $4,000 to get the soil samples taken care of?
Well, I did have to get it from you, but we gotta go find it. You know, maybe there's a lion item in the budget somewhere that's hidden in there, you can find $4,000. That would keep our wheels, that would keep our wheels rolling.
I would oppose if you were, you had the $4,000 and you wanted to go down there and get permission to go down there and do some boring. I like, we'd be opposed to that at all. I would still come to the city and...
Well, that is for your benefit as well as our benefit. I mean, not that we're sides. I'm just saying we're trying to get you, you know, to work together with us.
I just, I, I'm in favor of the boring. I just don't know that I'm in favor of us spending money for it.
Well, we haven't put that stuff on the table yet. I mean, we're willing as a group to go up and research that and put our heads together. You know, we're just, we're not professionals. We're just common jokes that are trying to make something happen.
I think if you raised the $4,000 and I don't have a problem with you doing the boring there, but as far as us...
I wouldn't have a problem if you gave us $4,000 either.
As a city, we've struggled for too many years to get our streets done. I'm not willing to spend a dime to do anything other than the direction we're going. We're doing five roads this year.
We had to replace the HVAC system on the library.
Cause we have to keep our, our house up and running.
Well, you can replace 22. And, you know, we're, we're trying to work with you and we're trying to see if we need you to work with us.
Yeah, cause we got the HVAC system at the library that's just about gone.
Let's say, come back and see, see what you find out down the road. Get on the agenda again and we'll have another conversation about it.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna meet tomorrow night, just for your information. We're gonna meet tomorrow and discuss, you know, what we've got here. And, you know, we're gonna put our wheels rolling here too, to see what direction we're gonna go.
We're supportive of your group and thankful for the work that you do. I just don't think the financial contributions in the...
No, I would, I would also think you'd come back and talk to Mike about your progress and he can bring it, tell us. And I just want to put it back on the agenda.
Now that I got my notes on the, on the right page, my, my bottom thing is, is what do we want? One of them is a commitment from the city to support rebuilding the King Memorial Pool. Second one was the $4,000 for the soil borings. And the third one was a contact person from the council that we could work with without having to come before the whole group like this.
That would be much worse.
So Mike could do that. The $4,000, you have no problem with that, but you like the idea of what we're doing.
Yes.
That answers my three questions.
Okay, thank you.
Good enough?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Line check development agreement, Michael, 522.
In front of you is the development agreement with Brett Segal's group for the line check on 115, 115 West Side Drive. I've asked Jessica to be here tonight to explain this in detail because it's a pretty lengthy document. So I'm gonna turn this over to her.
Sure. And I, I don't need to go into, I'm not gonna read through it. This is just actually something that you would be asked to consider approving as to form tonight and then authorizing your city manager to fill in some of the blanks that are still there. But I'd like to explain it to you in concept. So if you recall with this property, the RFP that went out involved four phases. There were request for proposals, developer interviews, selection of the candidate. And then this was really the important part, or the most important, I think, is the negotiation and approval of a development agreement because it was really important to this council that, not so much the money frankly, but the development and sort of the vision for what was to be built on that property. And so related to that, we've drafted a development agreement. Again, this is not quite in final form, but I can sort of go through the basic elements with you. So this, this will contain several different commitments from the developer. And I don't know if he's here.
No, he's in Florida.
He's not?
He's in Florida.
Oh, okay. So in terms of timeline, that's gonna be the big thing, is keeping this development moving, right? So construction commitments, a requirement that he actually paid a construction deposit to the city that if, in fact, he doesn't end up meeting certain deadlines, the city gets to keep for its troubles. He's gonna have to report to the city manager with both conceptual and final plans. And again, meet certain, certain milestones. And, and in exchange, the city will cooperate and support him as he seeks certain economic incentives from the state. Because he might be looking to get some sort of brownfield support from the city. It's not clear yet. It depends on what the MBC requires. But the city will support his efforts. There's no commitment in here to give him anything for that. But in exchange for, again, the purchase price and him meeting several different milestones, which will be set forth in here. So this is our sort of standard development and purchase agreement. And so it's, again, we just have to really finalize those deadlines. And, and that's something that you're being asked to authorize Mike to do with my assistance. So we got very little changes back from the developer when we gave him the form, so...
Can you expand on the brownfield thing a little bit?
Sure. So there are certain public facilities that he might be eligible for reimbursement for installing. So some examples might be, Mike, I don't know if you've talked to Brent about these, what he has in mind, but...
So we're looking at, so as part of his, he's, he's seeking funds through the State of Michigan Community Revitalization Program. There needs to be a percentage for local contribution. And there has to be a local contribution component in order for the state to basically participate. And that can, that can be a wide array of things. For example, we've, the DDA has committed $5,000 for sidewalk reimbursement. We are looking at possibly in the next fiscal year. We're looking at putting a program together for all of the DDA properties. He could be eligible for that for handicap ramp reimbursement. We've, we've talked about that with him. The brownfield may or may not happen because they don't believe the, the cost for mitigation is worth the amount of money they're gonna have to pay just to, the administrative costs are gonna cost more than what the mitigation's actually gonna be.
So he would have to have an environmental assessment to determine whether there were eligible expenses. And those might actually exceed, right, the amount that he's...
Right. So...
That's why I asked, because in my head, brownfield was all about environmental concerns. And I thought maybe I had misunderstood something.
No, but you, but remember, you know, with brownfield, it's a lot, it's a lot more than just a contaminated site. It's not, it's, you know, asbestos, lead paint, all of those things that, from the past, that are in place, which he, those, those are all, those are all things that are eligible to be mitigated through a brownfield program.
And I'm not sure what Lowell White Power stored in there. Was it transformers, did it leak into the soil? I mean, I looked at that fire in the back, cause that, that brownfield, I believe it had 35 pages. And I tried to go through 35 pages. There's so many things that were just running through my mind. The other one was a tax credit too, versus that there were so many things.
Right. And so we left it pretty wide open here in terms of our commitment. It just says that should he seek these things, the city will support his efforts. But he still obviously has to comply with all the requirements for each of these programs.
Yeah.
The key is gonna be that the developer has to work with the city manager in terms of the conceptual plans, the final plans, and that this development keeps moving along in accordance with milestones and ends up looking like you want. So that's, that's the key.
Any other questions for Jessica? The motion for resolution 522 for the development agreement. Make that motion. I'll support. Any other discussion?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salcedo?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gross.
Yes.
All right. Dan, you're up. Main Street Bridge boxes.
Good evening, mayor and council. Recently, the Lowell Shobo Garden Club received a donation to help with their efforts...